Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, May eighth, nine AM. We'll start the work session. Uh, we're starting off with some public comment. If you have the, uh, anybody in the mood here. Here, anybody online, please raise your hand for.
Yeah, there.
Good morning, Josh.
Everyone just gonna have to talk loudly today.
So anybody online have any other questions? Oh, they might not be able to. Uh, okay, first off, uh, we had a conversation last week about the livestock producer, uh, disposing of carcasses at the landfill car. And, uh, it sounds like Brian has had a conversation with Ellie and has a solution. Yeah, so I think it's a really good point. Uh, we need to make sure that everybody that wants it can get it and we're not discriminating, discriminating against anyone. So, uh, is, is that something we can use in it or not?
Uh, so I think what you would want is a policy saying here. I mean, to put some restrictions like it has to be livestock. Can't be the family dog. And probably want that to be made for him. Somebody would be doing, say, yes, this on the face of it qualifies. Waystation. All that need to be done. And what I think the previous discussion was that be helpful for the Wolf Committee, uh, to come up with. Right, first thing that I saw. So they could come up with some random sort of way we. That could damage the policy.
I'm really gonna need to speak up because I am getting flagged this time with chats. Yep.
Should we restart it?
I think Chelsea can remote in quickly if we can wait for a minute or two. But we are connected to the out, so I don't know what. So it's as high as it can go. Is that a hundred percent?
Hello, hello, hello. It should be fine. They say it sounds better.
Much better.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. So, then will you guys work together and are, are we approving it with that?
Yeah, I can approve it. We just need a policy so it's clear that we can participate and within the county and general. So we're not discriminating against one branch or against the other when somebody joins the day and say, well, you're from Primal, you're not compliant, so we can't accept it and.
Yeah, I'm totally. Okay, so I entertain a motion.
Well, you make the motion because you understand more what you want.
I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the Cook County. What I might suggest based on the conversation is a motion to delegate authority to Commissioner Barney to, um, draft and implement a policy regarding the disposal of livestock carcasses at the Cook County landfill, um, in keeping with the request of the Wolf Committee.
So, all one.
Perfect, and I'll second.
There we go.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Brandon?
Yes. Hello. Hi, uh, my name is Brandon Trauber and we have a project with the Cook County Youth and we're partnered with Cook County Parks and Recreation District to help reclaim twenty-six acres of river frontage on the Crooked River just south of Crooked River Park. And the short-term plan is, it's, the project has grown in scope because of the desires of the city and Cook County Parks and Recreation and the Cook County Watershed District and Cook County Weed Management and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. The reason that it's grown in scope is because it's a, a hot point for the health of the river and the community. So, uh, the first phase is we are simply going to pick up all the litter, the trash, the debris, and all the noxious weeds, and I'm here to appeal for you guys to help, uh, with a dumpster and tipping fees. And that's pretty simple. Um, the second part is a little bit more, um, interesting. What our long-term goal is, we're working with Central Oregon Intergovernment Council currently. And the long-term goal is to create a river path that follows the current river path that goes from there up across the bridge around the golf course and will end at the, uh, City Library Park. And, uh, a paved path and it will be for, um, equitable recreation and, uh, getting transportation and it's part of the Unified Trails System Plan of 2021 for the Parks and Recreation District. It's also part of the city, um, uh, transportation planning strategy. And it, it's very, very important for, uh, the Watershed District and also for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife's desire to start creating healthy river and get the trout and the steelhead to come back. So with that, what I'm looking for is a letter of support for the long-range plan as well. Just to end so that we can go out for federal funding. There's a lot, we found that there's a lot of federal funding and we are going out to raise ten million dollars to create a beautified path, remove all the noxious and toxic invasive species, and generate a more healthy river through town. And the town, from town downstream, it's very impactful. And all I'm looking for is a letter saying, yeah, we like this idea.
So, okay, I am on Executive Board and Board of COIC. So I just went last week to a meeting and I sort of asked about you and they're basically very premature here.
Yeah.
Yes, because they don't really know about you. So the letter of support, I'm kind of, I mean, and I, I agree with your vision. I think it's a wonderful vision and all that, but I'm just wondering on a letter of support if you're maybe not a little premature until you've worked with them a little bit more.
Well, they asked Scott Acock and Lauren Street said if we can get.
That's who it was. Okay, because, uh, quite frankly, I was with Tammy Bany and Michelle.
Yeah, they don't, they don't know. What, this is.
Okay.
This is part of getting, that's the first thing COIC asked.
Who was the second person?
Scott Acock.
Scott Acock and then.
It's Scott Acock. Lauren Street is supporting Scott. And they basically said, do you have buy-in from the community, which I do from the city and the, and Cook County Parks and Rec. And I've got letters of support which I can send to you, uh, with, uh, the Watershed and Weed Management.
Do you have anything from the city of Primal?
Yes.
You have a letter of support from them to COIC?
Not to COIC, but to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I like, Suzie, I'm super interested in seeing this stuff developed and everything, but I, I'd like to spend a little time talking to some of the partners and just seeing what their thoughts are and not, not know.
It is very premature. This is, this is a conversation. And so, you know, I, I think the, the issue is at hand today is to get approval for, that is a start.
So, so I, I talked to, I talked to somebody about it yesterday. Isn't the property you're talking about BLM property?
It was, uh, granted to.
Parks and Rec now manages it.
No, they own it now. It was granted to them.
So it's the area that's blocked off and.
Yeah.
Has the sod, I drove up there yesterday just to kind of check it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think a meeting of the stakeholders would be good just so we can discuss that.
That's the next step. Um, and we're in.
Document something with a letter of approval. Do you feel we really understand what we're approving?
Great.
We've done those in the past and sorry that we've done them. They don't understand what is taking place and so from my perspective, I like the law.
And then, so, so I know that you have made whatever, what, what date are you doing the cleanup?
May thirty-first.
Let's get on that. So May thirty-first is your cleanup?
Nine AM to six PM.
Okay. Who do you have coming for, uh, that?
We have a group of kids from the science class at Primal High School. Uh, we are working to get the, um, shoot, what's it called? Look, Young Life. Uh, there's, I'm also talking to Boy Scouts. We have a couple baseball teams, a, a wrestling team. We're just networking and, and I've, I've got, uh, some people maybe from, um, Cook County on the move. They're pretty booked out. Uh, but also, uh, I went and spoke to Rotary. And just people are coming out of the woodwork. Everybody seems to be really into it. So.
Okay.
It just started out as just a little cleanup project, but then it, it just went every, because of Cook County Parks and Recreation and the Watershed and Weed Management, they said, oh my God, this is an incredible opportunity. And it aligns up with what we're doing. And then I went to the city and they said, oh my God, this is an incredible opportunity. And it's way bigger than me. I told CI, COIC that I am not capable of managing such a thing. And so I am just doing my best to facilitate their exploration.
Okay.
And that's what this is.
Okay.
So, yeah, when does it comes, go ahead, Brian.
So, again, what is the ask for the cleanup? You know, because I.
Tipping fees and dump, and a dumpster.
So when it comes to a dumpster, we don't provide dumpsters. That would be you talk to, uh, Republic Services?
Okay.
That's, that's who you would talk to about that. And I think Parks and Rec already has dump fees through the county, through our, our nonprofit. Aren't they one of our people? So could you just work through them and use their dump fees?
If that's available.
I, I, I think it should be. I, I, I guess, uh, so we have a list of people.
Does Jackie know? Jackie, do you know how Park and Rec works?
They just have a regular account. It's not a nonprofit. It's not.
They do pay for it?
Yes, they donate now.
So see, that would be what his ask would be is that we accept that. What would the fee be for him for a dumpster for?
Normally when we have like the Ocho Creek cleanup projects, um, under thirty bucks usually.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty minimal unless you have tie, a bunch of tires or something that you know about. That'll increase the cost a little bit, but if it's just garbage, then usually, I mean, for sure you're a hundred fifty dollars.
Okay.
Are there a lot of tires out there?
Not that I saw them. I mean, I, mostly weeds and there's maybe some debris and some, uh, what do you, like, uh, sod and just.
Yeah, it didn't look great. I, I drove by it yesterday.
It's the weeds that are, are the problem. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm, you know, supportive of helping with the dump.
Yeah, I think so too.
At least we.
Yeah, but again, we don't, you will have to contact Republic. And I should have been on that and thought about that when I talked to you about that.
Okay.
But yeah, they have dumpsters. We don't really own them. But yeah.
Great.
So.
Yeah, so, and I, is it better for Parks and Rec to make the request or for him?
I'm not sure.
You can put it on their account and we can reimburse them or either, I don't think it really matters. Does anybody care?
What, what, what do you use? Well, when you ask Jackie, what, what's better for her?
It's thirty, it's thirty bucks. I'll pay for it. It's just.
No.
No, 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 no.
I didn't know what it was.
We just have to figure out how.
We just need to figure out, we're not trying to.
Let's ask the boss of the landfill who's right here. What would be the best way for us to go?
In the past, I usually just build county admin.
Okay.
Yeah, my main goal here was to open up the conversation and to let you know that the conversation is coming and, you know, I've never worked through something like this. And COIC is, they asked me to get your buy-in on a letter of support.
And he was not at the executive board meeting last Thursday, so probably.
Very, that's why I'm talking to Lauren Street.
Okay. So like I say, it would be good for him to, if you could, to bring that up so that there's more of an awareness and whatever. And I agree with Brian, it's a little early for a le, letter of support, but I mean, I encourage you on the project.
Could you let, could you tell me what? Just for process, what do, what do I need to do and how far do I need to get to get that?
To get to COIC?
Now, to get a letter of support.
Oh, well.
I would say I would just like to meet with the different partners and hear more about the project and, and understand, have a stronger understanding of what you're talking about. Because we've met before and yeah, see, like you're on track, but I just want to make sure that we hear from all the people involved and that in the past, we've approved things without hearing for, and I don't think you're doing this, I'm just saying we've approved things for groups and they've told us that they've had support and different people have been on board.
Gotcha.
And then we had butt on our face.
Gotcha.
Not too quickly after, because it turned out that a lot of those people may not have been contacted and may not have been on board.
Okay.
And so I just want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence for the community, making sure we're getting, are the good project. I'm not. Okay, let me be clear, I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying we need to do our due diligence before we jump on board.
I do have letters of support from Weed Management, um, Watershed, Parks and Rec. The city has only given a letter of support for this cleanup project because they're in the same situation you're in of like,
Yeah.
uh, for the long-term plan.
Yeah.
And I'm just the, trying to let people know so everybody knows that that's where we're going. And then I guess I'll get together with COIC, set a meeting where we can come together as a bunch of people informed.
And then, did you talk to our weed master, Thomas Laird? Did you talk to him or you're talking to the weed master at OSU?
Debbie Wood.
Okay. We also have a county weed master. And I have his phone number taped to my computer, which would, would also be something.
I can not give him it.
Okay.
And that would be probably a good buy-in for you too, because he takes care of the county's weeds.
Great.
Then you talk to Chris Cannon.
Yeah, he is way into this because of the impacts that it has downstream.
And these are the things that we need to know. We're not here to shoot you out of the water.
No, I don't feel that.
Supportive of your idea. We just need to be informed and I think you're doing a great job moving forward and we'll, we can all work together to make things happen.
Yeah, like I said, this is way beyond, it, it just grew because everybody is so interested in it.
You're just learning.
I was just doing a little cleanup project.
Yeah.
And that's a wonderful thing you're doing.
Yeah.
Very glad to hear you're doing.
Once they get it cleaned up, will they open it?
Well, no, what has to happen is we're going to clean it up and then do a plan of, uh, working with Oregon State University of actually planning out what we're going to do with the land and how it's going to work. And then I gotta work with Fish and Wildlife and River Access and all, uh, and the parks. And then if we're gonna do that, we have to know if the trail is going to work before we do that.
You've got a lot of hats you've got to put on.
Yeah, it's fun. It's awesome. Okay.
Well, do we need to make a motion about the tipping fees or what do we need to do?
Yeah.
Jackie wants to.
Why don't we just all get, everybody around the table pay, pay five dollars?
Well, we can do that.
I'd make a motion.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Intervene a motion.
And thanks.
For, I make a motion to accept the tipping fees for, uh, Earthwind Global Incorporated's cleanup on March twenty-sixth, or May twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay. I don't know why I looked at that and I saw twenty-six, uh, the twenty-six acres here on May thirty-first.
There we go.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Great.
Right, take care.
Sorry, sorry to be.
Good luck to you.
We, we appreciate, we appreciate people that are getting involved and getting excited. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Here comes Ann.
Ann.
You brought her back.
Bringing her back. Yeah, so, um, we discussed the, the Department of Defense grant a couple of times. We have a grant from the Department of Defense um, to adopt a military training overlay and update our commercial energy code. We published, um, some requests for, um, bits, uh, and we didn't get any responses, but the best-case scenario kind of fell into our lap and Ann is willing to help us out. So we have a contract in front of you, a personal services contract, um, with Ann to have her help us, um, with this project. Uh, it includes, uh, not to exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and there's a detailed scope of work in the personal services contract that ensures the tasks that we're required to do under the grant get accomplished. Uh, but wanted to get that in front of you to see if you had any feedback. And, uh, it's great that Ann is here. Uh, I'm sure she's happy to answer any questions if you want to grill her on her qualifications, uh, but, but, uh, now we're very happy to have her be available and be able to assist us.
Brian, I'm just ecstatic to see you, so.
Nice to have you back.
Yes. Thanks for the opportunity. It's a good project and I think the county has built in enough money knowing that I'm going to need assistance from county staff, GIS, where the legal counsel reviewing any documents. So there is that cushion built in to make sure that county gets paid for their work from the staff. So that's pretty important.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Ann. Thank you for thinking of us.
Is this something you need approved today or can send it in?
I think we can send it in there next week this time.
Good for me.
What are those kindergarten readers you're reading to? What are they gonna do?
It's more my husband.
Why you tell we kindergartners now? I'm not going to my husband, but, okay, perfect. We are very glad to see you. Okay, perfect.
I'm gonna sleep now.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Really appreciate it.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you all. And we'll see you in the upcoming year. Good luck with your fees.
Thank you.
Okay. Increased, proposed fee increased for community development.
So I believe the Finance Department will be back in front of, uh, the board with the official fee update proposal for the county, um, here shortly. But we need to get our fees out to the state so they can start uploading any fee increases into their system and they can run tests and all of that. I mean, do that, I think it's next week, their deadline. So we just wanted to have this work session to talk about community development fees specifically. Um, our plan this year is to just more or less do a five percent increase across the board, which is consistent with what we've done the last few years. Um, last year we did do a little bit more, uh, of a detailed analysis of the planning department's fees. So we, we, we've played around with those a little bit more than last year. Um, I still have money that I'm hoping to spend at some point, um, on a, a fee study for the whole of the Community Development Department to make sure we're actually receiving our actual costs, recovering our actual costs. Um, 'cause I'm not convinced we're at that point yet, but I think the five percent increase allows for increased costs we have regarding personnel, um, expenses increasing, inflation, all the other costs that we have to incur as a department. I did want to, um, take an opportunity just to run through a couple of fees where we aren't doing the five percent increase in case there are any questions about those. And I don't know, Katrina, were there any, is it just five percent across the board for the building?
Um, well, for the most part, it's five percent across the board. Um, however, there are a couple in the Building Department that are more. One of those, um, is the first page, which is the building minimum fee. For some reason, that fee wasn't in line with the rest of the minimums for like mechanical, something electrical. So we're aligning that to be the same. The other is the hourly inspection rates or plan review rates. Um, we were trying to get those to be more of a billable rate. We're still not quite there because we weren't quite sure what our billable rates were gonna be next year. So we bumped that from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty, which still isn't gonna quite cover, but there's some, gonna take a little bit with some of that time as well as inspectors. So it should even out and kind of help us get more in line of where we should be.
So, question.
Yeah.
What is outlined in red? Those are the ones that have been changed.
Some of the red.
To what, whatever, everything else is five percent?
Some of those are, some of those are just wording catches that I wanted to make sure are in those side comments that we make sure get, to get those updated and not miss them. But some of the stuff in red is the significant changes, not all.
Right, but everything else is five percent.
Five percent. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things we'll, we can touch on real quickly that maybe they get caught in red. Uh, but for the most part, those numbers that are red are the changes that are not consistent with the five percent.
There are more than five percent.
Five percent, yeah. Or on the planning side, we'll touch on it quickly. Again, on the planning side, we just, we, we restructured how the fee is being charged. I don't know that it's necessarily more or less, it's just the structure is changing. I did want to note on that first page, the advanced planning fee, this was a fee we adopted last year for the first time, um, that allowed, um, the department to recover from folks coming in for building permits, um, some additional fees to cover advanced planning costs that, um, uh, may be incurred by the county as a result of development. Um, so well, the way we structured that was there was a minimum valuation that had to be assigned to that building permit. So we weren't, we didn't, we didn't want to be charging that fee on, um, accessory structures and that type of building. Um, but we also capped it at the height. So the cap, I think, was twenty thousand or fifteen thousand dollars. It's twenty thousand dollars. That cap, I kind of regret it from the get-go because that cap would only be touched if a very large commercial development came in. And if that were to happen, we didn't end up ever hitting the cap this past fiscal year. But if one of those projects came in, we would have significant impact on our transportation system. It would change. I mean, we, we'd have some long-range planning issues that we would need to address as a result of, of those projects. So my proposal is to increase that cap to a hundred thousand dollars. That's a pretty significant number, but it's still significantly less than what that fee could be if we didn't have that hundred thousand dollar cap. Um, so I think it seems to me like a fair number. I'm not, I did not do, um, the same sort of number crunching I did when I came up with the advanced planning fee last year to kind of, um, help explain that number. Um, but in my opinion, the hundred thousand dollar kind of cap is a fair, fair cap and it won't allow the county to recover its costs. Um, in trying to address the, the planning issues that may arise from that type of development, which would be, be a significant project to come in. If it's a, if the cap, if the fee is capped at a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about that hundred thousand dollars would be point three oh of the building valuation. So the building valuation would be, I don't know, a couple million dollars. I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. It would be a, or not only a, uh, it should be significant, be hu, a huge number. Um, sorry, can't do the math in my head, but if we're talking about point three. He doesn't tell us with the numbers. It would be, it would be a significant, it would be a big number. So, uh, anyways, I just wanted to highlight that. And if there's any conversation and questions about that, I'm happy to have, have more of a conversation about, why I think that's the appropriate cap for that fee. I just want to make sure that the whole of the county is, is made whole if that type of development comes in and that we're able to address the, the potential development and planning needs that come up as a result of, of that type of project.
So I had a call at seven thirty this morning that the last two years you have increased by five percent. And that with the, the slow movement in permits and things, that we should not be increasing another five percent. What is your argument against that comment?
Happy, happy to not raise our fees and not decrease our fees if the general fund wanted to help support the planning and onsite programs. We are a fee-dependent department.
Yes.
And onsite and planning, um, do not cover their costs at this point. It's really not an option unless. And onsite and planning do not cover their costs at this point. It's really not an option unless the, the board wants to support those programs through the general fund.
It's thirty three, right?
Thirty three, right. So it's a big, big building valuation. Thank you, John. Significant impacts on, on the county and surrounding area.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think another good question would be, where are we comparatively to other counties in the region? Are we still, because my understanding is previously to this year, previous to last year, we've been, even with the increases, we've been much lower than neighboring communities.
Yeah, I think we're still overall, I think we're, we're lower. If you sat down and went through the Shute County's fee schedule, for instance, you'd see some fees that are significantly higher than ours and others where we're closer, maybe even a little bit higher than the Shute County. Their site, Shute County, just using them as an example, not to pick on them, but their site plan reviews for single-family dwelling. Last time I checked, it's something like forty five hundred dollars, whereas we're charging like nine hundred fifty dollars or something along those lines. So we're still on those, on those permits where it really impacts like somebody who's just trying to build a house, I think our fees are still, still significantly lower. I, I haven't sat down and done a, like a across-the-board check on Jefferson County and the Shute County this year to see what they're proposing and see how we're comparing, but I think by and large, we're lower, but yeah, I mean, I think everybody, everybody has the same kind of mandates in terms of what we can do with our fees. We can't just charge whatever we want. We can't, you know, we have to charge either our average cost or our actual cost, at least on the planning, planning side, so there's limits to what we can do and how high a, a county can go. The Shute County's costs are higher. I mean, they're, they pay more and they have other costs that the county doesn't have, so their, their fees are understandably going to be higher, but they also have limits to how, how high they can go. So I think our fees overall are very fair, but to my point about the general fund, I mean, the, the one way that the fees can be capped or
It's by.
or reduced is to, is to, and I will say just, there's been a lot of conversation on the AOC planning directors lister, and it's very clear that Cook County is one of the few counties that does this fee-dependent thing for planning and onsite specifically. A lot of counties have significant general fund support for those programs. And I'm happy to provide that data at some point, but I understand the desire to have those programs be fee-dependent. The, the downside is we do have to make sure our fees are covering our costs.
Yeah, and for me, this is much, you know, I'm familiar with building and all of that, but I think it's a much fair approach to sustaining the community development with fees rather than being subsidized by an entire county of people.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the, the policy, the policy behind that is, you know, the, the developers and the builders are, are paying away for the services that are being provided because they're the ones using those services.
Yeah, as we should.
Yeah. So just a couple more quick notes. So on onsite, one, one, a couple of fees that aren't in red that did go up by more than five percent, I believe it's on page nine, major and minor septic system repairs. Those went up, I believe more than five percent, five percent. We did that after consulting with the county sanitarian and looking at fees for other local jurisdictions. Looked like we were low on that. The county sanitarian agreed that is, he spends a lot of time on those and the fees needed to be increased. So those go up a little bit more than five percent. On the planning side, two quick notes. So in the past, legal lot, lot determination fees, we had two fees, one for the first four and then another fee for each additional, for, for five plus lots. So somebody could come in with a, a request for twenty legal lot determination and the fee was only eighteen hundred dollars, which isn't reflective at all of how much time goes into those. Each lot requires a review, so this fee has been updated to kind of reflect a more fair fee that's based on the number of lots being, actual number of lots being reviewed, not just a cap of the fee at five, five lots. And then we've included, we threw this in kind of last minute, last year, it's a declaratory ruling fee for measure forty nine, so if somebody were to come in today and say that code update you did in twenty twenty one limits my ability to use my property and I'm going to file a measure forty nine claim. We previously didn't have a fee in our schedule for, for that. The state charges twelve thousand five hundred dollars for those types of claims. Most of the claims I think we would see here in Cook County would actually be claims that need to be made to the state. I think we're pretty careful about our code updates in terms of how we, how we, the language we use and trying not to limit uses. But nonetheless, it's a risk that we get one of those claims at some point. The way I've structured this fee is just to charge our actual costs. I, the fact that the state's fee is twelve thousand five hundred dollars makes me nervous that they know something about these that we don't know. These could be really time-consuming, expensive claims to address on the county's part. So I wanted this to be an actual cost with a relatively high deposit to be paid to make sure we're, we're recovering our costs. And if it ends up being less than, we, we refund the difference to, to the claimant. But if it ends up being more, we also have the right to, or ability to, to recover our, our complete cost based on our hourly rates. There's just a lot of unknowns with that one, so that's why that is an actual cost. We don't know what our average cost is going to be, so I just want to make sure we recover everything we can. Anything else? So there's an agritourism renewal pages that are? So one thing with agritourism permits, they need to be renewed. I believe every two or four years. We didn't have a fee in the schedule previously for that, so it's just an attempt to make sure we can recover that fee or our cost there.
So you did, you just said you were having, once you got the permit, then it was, you didn't have to pay anything for an agritourism thing? Because it's zero and now it's two sixty?
Yeah, I, I, I think we probably would have found some sort of miscellaneous fee to make sure we took over our costs, but this is just to be more certain in terms of what happens. We had some questions from applicants, you know, what's the fee for that renewal? If I go this route and I need to do a renewal, what's the fee going to be and we just want to be able to tell them straight up what that will be.
Is that the same as a farm stand?
No.
So that's different. Farm stand permit is not, once you have that, you're all set. That's not renewable.
I, I don't believe there's a renewable, renewable requirement for farm stands. But yeah, just wanted to get this in front of you, make sure there's no red flags before we start sending it out to the state. Obviously, if there's any changes we need to make, we can make minor changes with the state as they are uploading the information. They just don't want us to come in wholesale and have to redo everything and on June thirtieth, right before everything goes live, so. If this looks okay to you, we'll start sending the data out to the state and then we can have more conversation and then the finance comes. First word with the complete fee schedule.
Look fine to me. You have a wish for some formal.
Just wanted to get this in front of you, make sure that you guys didn't see anything. There will be a formal process on the fees coming up.
Perfect. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Will. Thank you for your good intentions back. Threw you to the wolves yesterday. I rarely did want to have to question you on anything, but I did get a phone call, so I thought, well, I better get the answer from you.
I thought plenty about it, Suzy, so that's one of that.
Okay, I'm gonna, that's, that'll be my answer is I thought plenty about it.
Thank you.
Alright, Andy.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. For the record, Andy Parks, contract county administrator. Also have Vance Jacobson. With JB Rewards available remotely on this call. Appreciate the opportunity to, to join you remotely. And wanted to go ahead and just give you an update on, following up on the presentation last week. The commissioners, you made several inquiries, you held discussion and asked for following, the following information prior to taking action on the study recommendations. Wanted to report on the department director's positions and readiness to proceed. A request to visit, revisit various positions, several of those, including victim's advocate, operations manager in community development, jail nurse, mental health coordinator, and the front office staff in the sheriff's office. Additionally, Commissioners Hemrick and Crawford indicated there may be concerns regarding the staff capacity to implement the study on the proposed timeline. That is an effective date of May twenty, or excuse me, May one, twenty twenty four. There's a table in the memo I sent to you that includes all of the departments, some notes there with respect to some of the pending items that were in emails and conversations from them and status of those, which pretty much they're all done or can be implemented in the implementation process or on an ongoing basis. And then all of them indicating, yes, they're supportive of moving this forward on the timeline requested. The positions specific here is the victim's advocate, that, a senior, that position's been added to the, the schedule, which is appendix D. You know, more on that in a second. So two grade advancement from an individual that's promoted from victim's advocate. The victim's services supervisor, Vance was able to revisit that, go into the detail of the worksheets and so forth that were provided and was able to rescore that to one twenty two. A registered nurse for the sheriff's office jail nurse position was added to the schedule. It's one that existed, it just didn't make it to the, to the schedule. The other positions noted above and a few others that had been mentioned in communications from department directors were reviewed by Vance with no recommended changes to his previous scoring at, at this time. I had an opportunity to discuss with Vance all of the requests and he indicated, and he's, you know, here to speak to, you know, any questions, you know, double-checked his work as well as cross-referencing to other counties for reasonableness in their alignment with their positions and the various salary ranges. Vance mentioned, as described in the study, that the job measurement, you know, trademarked scoring system facilitates the periodic review of positions for potential rescore. You may recall, there's a process that's detailed in the, in the study. Periodic reviews may occur as those position requirements such as education, experience, knowledge, abilities change, incumbents retire or move up or leave the organization. And I think that summarizes that. You know, again, the memo shows, you know, each of the departments, some notes, you know, and approval to move forward with implementation. And then with respect to the finance and HR team, you know, we were able to, you know, meet shortly after the board meeting last week and discuss, you know, thoroughly discuss the implementation steps, their concerns and so forth. Through those conversations, we've developed an implementation plan. We've already, you know, initiated those activities. Christina has taken the detailed position schedule that, you know, become, comes over in an Excel work file from Vance that we've been intimately going through and trying to keep up to date. She's got that and working with staff to make sure all of the pay, current pay is correct and the steps and where they would be going consistent with the implementation plan are in place. And with some skills that she has, she's able to, I think, save a considerable amount of time by taking, mapping the Excel, Excel individual cells to a, an Adobe environment to create a form so that there's a schedule of the communications, for the communications, which was a draft included in your packet. And then also the personnel action paperwork that fills that in on an automated basis as opposed to doing it manually by hand. That will, again, save considerable time and allow the team to focus more on quality control. One of the elements that was a concern is in the two thousand eighteen study, I think, you know, Commissioners Crawford and Barney were there for that. One of the challenges you had is you had a new HR director that really wasn't part of that process through the entire experience and then the implementation, there was not any real communication back to the employees to explain exactly what was going on, how it was going on, how they were directly impacted. We've built that into the schedule and, you know, again, that's part of that draft communication together with the idea of meeting directly with the department heads, reviewing each of the individual employees for their department and then also being there for individual meetings with the employees to address, explain the, the adjustment in how that's impacting them and any questions they may have. So with that, you know, open up to questions or if Vance had anything he'd like to add to that?
Actually, well put, Andy. I really only have one additional thing I'd like to add. The importance of implementing this, not only the schedule, but the timing of it is, can't be overemphasized. It's once we get, once we get the system approved and get moving on toward implementation, we, we not only accomplish the goals of the project, but what you also do is we have a renewed, a renewed capability of responding to change and, and doing it in a way that preserves internal pay equity. All the while, as you well know, we are, we are proposing a salary grid that is on an, on an aggressive track to be competitive, not only with peer-level organizations, but also those that that Cook County loses to people too. And so my only ask of you is, is to is to please adopt, accept the report and adopt the, the, the schedule as written and as amended already.
Yeah, thank you, Vance. You know, for consideration here, you know, you may recall the recommendations. It was on slide six and hopefully that's something that, you know, Sarah, you know, can bring up, but you know, in terms of adopting the, the report and the recommendations associated with that includes the, you know, adopting the job mesh system that's in the report, adopting the job classifications and listing. That's appendix D as amended, so that includes the changes I mentioned earlier, which is addition of the victim's advocate senior to the schedule at one fifteen and the addition of a victim services, or excuse me, the regrading of the victim services supervisor from one twenty to one twenty two and the addition of the registered nurse to the grid at one twenty four. The other item C is adopt the recommended salary structure and adopt the implementation plan. The other item there, elected official salaries. Vance is working on finishing up a report that will be provided to the compensation committee that will lay out the elected official salaries. He's reviewing the commissioners' salaries presently with information from throughout the state as well as alignment within the pay structure that you're, you're considering here for the rest of the organization. And then the other component here that we discussed last week was to have the sheriff's office be going to a nine-step system as opposed to the thirteen-step system that will be in another salary grade or a salary schedule that we can, you know, get put together. And the last component of that with the And the last component of that with the sheriff's office was a commitment to revisit the salary schedules for the entire system here should the pay gap between ranges for the sergeants positions within the sheriff's office become eighteen percent or less than the lieutenant's pay scale. And I believe that's all I had.
Thank you, Andy.
Any input? Questions?
Uh, yeah. So just, we haven't seen, or I haven't seen the amended documents. I'd like to see those before they get approved. I mean, I agree with what Andy's saying that, I mean, everything sounds right, but I would like to see the paper before it's voted on.
Well, quite frankly, Andy, I looked, you sent this email at nine seventeen PM. I went to bed at nine PM. I want to add, I want to thank you for doing what I asked, what you did. I would like to at least read this email more thoroughly. I wasn't aware it was on my thing this morning, or I would have. So I do want to read the email, the amendments, and I agree with Bill and see that. So I understand the importance of moving this forward, but I also want to be very sure about my vote. So again, like I say, sorry, but I need I need some time to digest what you have presented.
Have you looked at the PowerPoint? Were you given that PowerPoint?
From last week. I saw it last week during court, yes.
That one did not change. That was not
Same PowerPoint?
Yes. The new documents is what she's referring to that were
Yeah, that just came at nine seventeen. And again, I thank you, Andy. You, it looks just with your presentation, it looks like you have addressed everything that we asked for. But again, I haven't, I've just been skim reading it while you were presenting and that I want to, I want to read it.
I appreciate that. Yeah, for for Bill, the only change that impacts the sheriff's office is posting the registered nurse to the grade one twenty four. That's the only, only additionally edit. And that's same place that we have the emergency services manager position, health programs initiative manager, environmental health, public health nurse, BSN senior. So those are, that's the only change in it's just an edit to add that position, although it's been, it had been previously scored, so that there's nothing new there for for the sheriff's office. The victim services supervisor position, that was a request that was made. Again, that one, you know, moved up a couple of grades. And then the victims advocate senior was an additional career enhancement opportunity that was added, you know, at a grade one fifteen. Those are the only changes to appendix D. Nothing else in the study has changed. Nothing else in the report has changed. The key thing that I think, you know, is relevant to, you know, the discussion here and that your decision is you have all department heads that are saying, yes, ready to go. That was a request that you made and that's the direct feedback I've got from them. And then the finance staff ability to implement, they are prepared to implement in our proceeding. The, you know, if this is put on the consent agenda next week, you know, our effort internally will be to proceed as though it's going to be, you know, approved. And I I do understand the, you know, concern of getting this, you know, at late hour. There was quite a bit of work that went into getting this done and making sure it got done before your meeting and doing, you know, as thoroughly and as completely as we could. And so that's where we are with that. You know, if you would like to, you know, hold this off until next meeting, we can do that. And but, you know, the finance staff will be moving forward with the implementation plan, presuming that it will be approved next week.
So commissioners, just for food for thought, so that they're kept apprised. We're going into negotiations with the road union and they've requested a number of different documents, including the most recently adopted fee schedule. They have indicated they prefer to get final documents before they suggest dates for negotiations. So I think as far as that component goes, this is the only outstanding document that is still waiting for us to write.
And I do want to tell you, I liked it on this one memo, how you have put the departments out and no changes request. I do, I do like your presentation, Andy. I'm just, I'd like to study it. I wish I would have known and I would have read it earlier this morning.
The only thing I would say is, I, you know, I, I think the finances make sense as long as all the numbers work and everything. But the titles, I'm not as interested in moving forward with the title changes. I've talked to a lot of people that would prefer not to see their title changes and I don't see it as a as a something that changes the compensation of the people. Sometimes even those titles have value in what they appreciate being called and different things. So I I'm comfortable if we have some time to dive in more before next week on the finances, but I'm not interested in moving forward with the title changes.
You know, with all due respect, the title changes, as we've talked, aren't being changed. We're implementing the pay features of this. The title changes would be done as we communicated last week with the coordination with the department heads and HR, working through that as we go through time. The key thing right now is addressing the compensation for your employees that have, I think, patiently waited for this, you know, to happen. This is again, there, there's nothing new in this report. You've had this report now for three weeks. And there's some minor changes to this. Very minor changes to it, the job measurement system, the the implementation plan, all those things are consistent and address your questions. And like I say, I'm I'm fine if you want to wait, you know, to read this material more thoroughly. I fully understand that. You know, we would be moving forward, you know, in the organization with the anticipation that you will approve this, you know, effective May one. You know, at least that's, that's what we're set up to do. You know, it gets a little trickier, considerably trickier to move this back into May sixteenth pay period or May fifteenth pay period with the holiday. And then you also have, you know, each, each delay beyond the May first implementation just adds more review, more chance for error. You know, and employees that, you know, maybe losing a little confidence in our ability to, you know, to get this done. And so with that, you know, I, you know, we just ask that we move this forward, get it approved so we can get, get the changes going.
Oh, I make a motion to move it forward.
Okay, what do you mean by move it forward?
I would like to move it forward for the consent agenda for the next board meeting. And if there are people that still want to read it, go over it. Unless you're just, you know, speaking with Andy and
I kind of, I would, I would, I hesitate to put it on consent agenda just for the fact in case there is any public input that affords them the opportunity to public input. I'm not anticipating it. Like I say, I'm reading your dear employee first name thing. I, I just, I do want to read this. So that would be my only thing there is to put on the consent agenda in case there is anyone in the public that wants to call her. And I don't anticipate to put on discussion agenda. Yes, that would be my only comment to you on that, Brian. And then that gives me time, like I say, to read this. And then if there is a discussion, then then we can. And it it looks, like I say, Andy, I just wish I would have known, but I didn't. I'm sorry.
I, and that's fine. We can have another discussion and hopefully after that discussion that it'll pass and it's not a week or two or this continues to drag on. But, you know, at some time we've got a ceiling below and
Yes.
and get it done. And then there are a lot of people that are in it.
I, I totally
There's been a lot of work that's gone into it. And we've had a lot of time to look at it.
Okay. I totally agree. And so if you would put it on the discussion agenda, I would be fine with moving forward and seconding your motion.
Okay, I remember we should put it on discussion agenda.
And I'll second that.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
All right. Consider ratifying the appointment or administrator's report.
Yeah, let's see, you know, before going to that particular item, I just wanted to welcome Lisa Newburger to the county finance department as the accounting manager. Appears that we're being, finance department anyways, being taken over by the burger derivatives. But, you know, we have full staffing, you know, now, you know, in the finance and you know, Lisa has been a longtime resident of Prineville and brings some, you know, considerable private sector experience. You know, to the organization, be a big, big help to to the organization. So excited to have her here. I think she's online. So Lisa, welcome aboard. With respect to ratifying James Priess to the facilities director, that process included six individuals from throughout the organization, from library to the road department to community development department, facilities, and we also had an external representative from Kirby Nagelhot, who is building, you know, companies building the Justice Center and built the jail. So there's the ability there to, you know, have that insight in terms of what what the systems are involved in and pursue that line of questioning. There was unanimous support to finalists that came out of this process, unanimous support for James as the best fit for this. Had a great conversation with James and have had three or four subsequently. You know, in terms of, you know, moving this forward. He's very excited to, you know, join the team, build the the maintenance operation. I understand he's had, you know, great visits with each of you. I very much appreciated the time that the facilities team and Brian, you know, did in terms of turning him through the various facilities, including the new justice center. And, you know, he brings twenty five plus years' experience and, you know, would appreciate, you know, you know, considering his ratification and his ratification would be contingent upon the approval of the comp study. And with Mitch and also, he's going to need to give four weeks of notice to his employer.
Perfect.
I, I thought he was a good, I really liked him, so I
No, absolutely. How do we move forward? Do you need a motion to hire him or?
Yes, it'd be great to, yeah, have a motion to ratify the appointment of him to the position of facilities director and and we'll work with him to get that finalized.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going to go into executive session.
Yeah, hold on.
Oh.
Yeah, I've got one, one other item just to mention to you is, you know, on HR, you know, I've met with Eric and Christina Heron. You know, we've reviewed the status of a document that was provided by Christina Hanigan that just goes through the various elements where things are with the department as she, you know, left the position. We've gone through identified, you know, best fit for current staffing to be able to take on and make sure that we're getting the required elements of the HR function performed timely, reaching out and talking with those individuals and making sure that, you know, they're able to take on those responsibilities and working through getting the technology details addressed with, you know, the IT department so that they can perform those functions. Was in the process of distributing a communication on that late yesterday. There'd be two separate communications, one that's going to the department heads and and commissioners, and then another one that's going to all employees, kind of just updating them on what in where they might go to find information and get assistance. And then, you know, there's an email that came from Eric late yesterday that I think we'll talk a little bit more about that may may impact those those memos and just that's my update on on, you know, the HR function. Any questions on that?
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything before we go to executive session?
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Vance.
I'm going to read this in and then maybe we'll take a minute or two break.
Do we have any question updates?
The only thing I have is yesterday, quite a few members of state agencies, mostly DEQ, and then one from, I don't know what his, he was a high road geologist came and we had owners and they went out. They were looking at the wells and I think it went well and Will was here. I threw him to the wolves only once, maybe twice. But he handled it. He came out unscathed, so.
That's maybe, maybe physically, emotionally, I might consider.
I'm sorry, Will. I'm sorry, Will. But one of the things that was interesting that kind of came out of it is all this time they've wanted us to postpone the mayor. And for the first time, as Will said, they wanted us to postpone water once they hit the water, which was kind of an interesting note. So anyway, but we have the May thirtieth listening sessions coming and they're going to give me a list of duties of what I need to do and they have a, they have a flyer. And so we'll move forward.
All righty. Kirk County Board Commissioners will now meet the executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two H for the purpose of consulting and counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to litigation and litigation likely filed. And under ORS one nine two six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt from by law from public inspection. Representatives, representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All of the audience members are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are strictly directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except announced. The decision may be made in the executive session. In the executive session, return to session one, audience back in the room. Now leave the executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two H for the purpose of consulting and counsel concerning the rights and duty of a public body with regard to current litigation, litigation likely filed. The ORS is under one nine two six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. The decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to session one, back in the room.
All right, commissioners, for the topics in the executive session, the first one under two F to Foxtrot, I don't think that there's any motion that follows. I think that was an update. And we don't need to take any further action on that. For the first topic under two H to hotel, we'll put on the record that Seth has recused himself from that and did not participate in the discussions or was in the room. I'd recommend a motion to delegate authority to county legal council to negotiate a contract agreement within the parameters discussed in the executive session. So.
I second that.
So in this case, because he's recused himself, I think it would just be better for you two to vote and
motion made, second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I understand.
Thank you. I'm sorry. For the second topic under two H, what I understand the idea is, is a motion to delegate authority to Commissioner Barney to negotiate contract terms on behalf of the county with any final contract terms to be approved by the board of commissioners and to delay communication parameters with the counterparty as discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Okay. I think those were the three topics. So unless there is any other addition, I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other motion from that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, John.
Over here.
I'm sorry. The final two H is a motion to direct staff to proceed as directed in the executive session.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry, John. We just left you out like you weren't even important.
Anything else?
Sure. I I do want to tell you, I really liked your consensus because I was really